Hi, good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order 6:31. I ask everyone rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the Republic where it stands, one nation, one God.
Invisible.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. This is a special meeting. We cannot vary the agenda from what we have, so we'll move on to public comment. If anyone in the public wants to make a comment, this is your time to do so. We'll remind you that please keep it to a minute, three-minute maximum, and it has to be addressing budgetary items. So with that, one for any comments? Going once, going twice? Okay. All right, purpose of this special meeting is to continue our review of the budget. Primarily tonight, we've called in a number of departments and outside agencies to give them a chance to discuss what they requested in their budget and give the board of selectmen a chance to ask some questions about it. I'm going to go in order, so it looks like everyone's here as presented on the agenda. That means Haddam Historical Society. Lisa, you're up first.
Okay, here I am. Thank you very much. Um, we are then asking for a cost of our collections care, um, which comes out to be $5,600, which you were very generous and gave us this past year. Um, we are struggling because of COVID. Uh, we were not able to hold any of our fundraisers, programs, or events in the last year and probably won't be able to do so for at least the next six months or so. Um, so been concentrating a lot on our collections, uh, in the past year. Fortunately, I was able to continue to work because I'm here by myself 99% of the time. Um, so collections has really risen to the top of the, um, workstation and again, we're asking for a cost share. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Uh, we think that the collections are extremely important to the town of Haddam. Um, we share them with the public through a number of avenues, including social media, uh, print publications like the Haddam Bulletin and Haddam News. Um, we share them with scholars, visitors. Um, we do have a number of online exhibits, uh, that we've created in the last year as a way to share the collections. Um, so the collections are a very important part of our mission and we'd like to continue collecting and sharing them with the town of Haddam. I can't hear Bob.
Probably because nobody could. I had my microphone muted. Let me try again. Thank you very much, Lisa. Question, Sean, Kate?
Oh, and I do also want to mention that, um, this year is our first year as stewards of the Haddam Shad Museum. Uh, Dr. Joe Zion has given, uh, the Haddam Historical Society the museum and all its contents. So we are now 100% responsible for that. And if you haven't been, I highly urge you all to make a visit. Uh, we're hoping to be open by appointment during Shad season this year. Um, but it is one of our town's hidden gems. And again, that's another responsibility that we have on our plate now.
This is Kate. Um, I'll jump in and I, I'll probably end up asking a variation of this question to most of the groups that are presenting tonight. Um, so first, Lisa, I just want to thank you for keeping your budget flat, uh, or requesting a flat budget just in, in a time when, you know, it's already taking on a lot. So my question is kind of, if, if we can all get out our crystal ball and look ahead to next year, um, let's say if things, like if things don't drastically improve, like what could be in jeopardy of being cut? Um, or like, is this going to be, like, is, is this funding going to keep you sustained through the next budget year? Like, what could possibly end up getting cut, um, if needed? Now, and I'm not saying like monetarily, I mean more like services-wise, like what ends up happening with the historical society, like internally? If, you know, if expenses come up or something comes up?
I think probably the biggest change would be that we would not be able to, um, properly buy the required museum standard, um, items, catalog items that need, like the archival boxes, archival paper, um, all the special equipment that we need, um, to do the proper job to, again, museum standards. That would probably be pushed down in terms of, you know, buying those supplies as well as probably time in cataloging things as well.
This is, uh, this is Sean, and I'm probably, we, we ask this of almost everybody also. Now, the, um, the organization, does it have a savings and how much of that is going into, um, you're, you know, how much are you spending, um, to, uh, to upkeep the collection to keep the organization going?
Um, we do have a very small savings. Um, we do have a very strict financial policy, which allows us to spend, um, I think up to 5% a year. That helps with, um, overall, all operating costs, including collections. Again, every year we ask to cost share collections here because we feel that collections are the most important part that we share with the town of Haddam. Um, and we ask for the same amount every year, and we have from the very beginning. Um, only last year did you actually meet our request. Um, previous years, it's always been a much smaller portion of our request. Um, so we do have, again, a very strict financial policy, which allows us to use a bit of our savings, but, um, not the majority of it.
All right, now, using a bit, now, are you, is that for emergency, like, something big came along and where you wouldn't, where you wouldn't come to the town to supplement that emergency? Or I guess you have a savings for a reason. What would that reason be?
I mean, used for capital improvement? And one-off expenses?
Okay, thank you. Like I said, we'll, we'll be asking this question probably to everybody.
All right, Lisa, just to clarify, the 5,600 you're requesting, it's dedicated entirely to the preservation of the collection?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
This is Kate. I have a question for Bob. Um, are we voting on these budgets tonight or are we just, or is this for discussion only?
Uh, my intent was we would vote on them unless you would rather just do a discussion and we can do a summary at our next meeting.
Okay. No, I'm fine with voting tonight. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I, this is Sean. I prefer to, if we can clear up as much as we can tonight, that would be good.
Right, and Sean, this is Bob. I clear up, you mean vote on and be totally?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Let's get this budget to the Board of Clients, you know, efficiently and as quickly, but as well as we can.
All right. All right, thank you, Lisa. Let's call for a vote on the request from the Historical Society. I have a motion to that extent, please.
Uh, this is Sean. I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, the budget request of 5,600.
All right, motion has been made. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Off to my next board.
All right, next up, Adam Killingworth Recreation Authority. Robin, I assume that you are going to speak?
That's me. Hi, everyone.
Hey, Robin, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hi, Robin.
Hi. Okay, so, um, we're requesting, um, well, we did lower our budget overall. Um, because, and it will go into your question about what kind of cuts were made. Um, we had to make a lot of cuts this year. Um, and so we would like to bring some of that back next year if it's a normal year, but if, if it's not, we will, of course, do what we had to do this year. Um, which, um, I can tell you what that was in a little bit, but, um, looking to lower our overall budget, um, by $62,000 overall, we're still requesting the same amount from the towns because, um, we lost so much revenue this year, well over $300,000 in program income. Um, so, you know, it's going to be a while for us to be able to get back to where we were. I think it's going to take time. Obviously, we're a, uh, very dependent on people in-person programming type of things. And childcare after school, every, not being allowed in the schools this year has greatly affected us. Um, we've had to, um, we don't have as many programs going on. We've had, we, our childcare, um, after-school program is down because a lot of people are working from home. Um, so that's, that's our biggest thing right now, our biggest hurt right now. Um, and we hope, you know, we anticipate that it's going to get back to normal eventually, but, um, this year, um, it's really hurt us. Um, so we're asking for the towns, um, the same, the eight, with the ADM split. Um, it would reduce Haddam's share by $1,400 compared to what we asked for last year. I know last year we were given 100, but we're still asking for the same percentage-wise, um, 112 from Haddam and, and 72-8 from Killingworth based on the ADM. Some things that we lowered in this next year's budget is we did, the biggest one is we did cut our administrative assistant from 32 hours to 10 hours a week. Um, that's the biggest, the biggest change in our budget. Um, just because right now the work just isn't there and, um, uh, you know, we've had to learn to do things different ways and, and that was the thing that we have learned to live with. Um, uh, other things, now, we're also dealing with a rise in minimum wage. Every year, it went up to $12 an hour this past September 1st. It will go up to $13 an hour this August 1st. The following July, it will go up to 14, and the following June, it will go up to 15. So for the next three years, we're looking at some major minimum wage increases, which affects our high school counselors, our lifeguards, our swim instructors. And then it done, then does counter-effect the people who are above them a little bit, you know what I mean? Because now the, everyone's going to get raised to like 15, which is where our adult staff are now, and they're going to have to get raised. So over the next few years, we have that big increase looming over our heads. Um, some things I've done to kind of offset that a little bit this year, or this, this year and next year and moving forward, is to like, say, cut the pool hours from like, instead of open till nine every night, I'm closing at 8:30. And, you know, we haven't been open on Sundays this year. Um, uh, you know, little, you know, shaving, a little bit of time off of things like that is going to help reduce that lifeguard line item. Um, things like that, so, uh, but that is a big expense that's going to happen over the next few years that we have to think about. Now, this current year, we have no basketball. We have no gym, field house, open gym. We have none of that stuff. So I'm hoping that we will have that stuff next year, but, um, we've been able to save a lot in our current budget because we're not spending any money on any high school attendance. We don't have anyone for youth basketball attendance. We don't have the field house open. We're not paying those custodian costs on weekends. Um, we haven't produced a brochure. We haven't produced a summer, fall, or winter brochure. We don't plan on producing a summer brochure. We're doing everything month-to-month. And we're just doing flyers on, on Facebook and bulk email, month at a time, just to get us through this pandemic. Um, those are some big things that we cut this year. Um, I didn't take that out next year because we would like to produce a brochure again, you know, a three-month brochure, which, which reaches a lot more people than what we're probably reaching now just through Facebook and emailing, um, and, and, you know, school flyers. Um, so that's a big savings this year. Uh, more will come to me, but any questions so far?
Uh, this is, uh, Sean. Um, I guess, you know, you cut back, I just said you cut back administrative assistant. Um, say, you know, the fall, vaccines are out there and you pick up, um, you were able to do more, do you anticipate having to pick up those hours?
I hope not. I mean, the, the main thing we need our administrative assistant for is to, to process payroll and, you know, pay some bills and stuff like that. And, um, you know, we, over the years, we've streamlined so many things. Uh, registration is mostly done online now, so that's taken away from that position where that position used to handle all those phone calls and all those mail. And so over the years, we've seen kind of a decline in that, in what's really needed for that position, and we really took a strong look at it. The pandemic made us really take a strong look at that, you know, once we started to have to work from home, we realized, gee, we can do this. You know, I could take up, I can start doing this a little bit more and Johnson can do, you know, do that role a little bit more. We can kind of cut from that position and, and, you know, we're, you know, we don't, we're, we all can answer the phone. So we, you know, we just found ways that we can, um, condense that and it's, it's working and, um, even if it's gets a little, well, even when it gets a little busier, we feel that we're able to handle that.
You know, I, I assume you've had that cut program since the pand, with the pandemic and do you anticipate coming in under budget this year?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so with that money coming in under budget, um,
You mean under budget with expenses?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, your budget $100,000 last year, you're at $90,000 expended this year. Do you anticipate expending the last $10,000? I'm not telling you to do that by any means.
Well, I mean, basically, the things that we're really spending money, only things we're really spending money on right now is, is our pay, our salaries, our, our insurance, our workman's comp and liability insurance. All the, you know, the instructor, the, the lifeguards, um, we are making, you know, help, you know, that we're all upsetting some of the aquatic stuff with swim lessons and pool, but of course, not everything comes, we don't make, you know, we don't make that back 100%, but we are, um, able to, um, at least sustain that a little bit. And the pool, by the way, has actually been our most, um, very popular this winter with, with lap swimmers and, and the few amount that we could take in swim lessons. It's been the godsend just to be able to have that for the community. Um, but, um, really, we've, we've cut so much, we're really only spending on, on what we have to right now. We're not buying things, we're not. It's just basically payroll, health insurance, liability, workman's comp, uh, IT, you know, our computers, phone, you know, just our basics. So.
No, do you have, does the agency have, is, um, just, um, I'll ask a follow-up, have money in reserve for capital things? Now, will you, you know, I hope the, the RSD 17 can find a home for you, um, if that building is, is unusable. Um, would you be able to, you know, and I imagine we'll have to help also be able to use some of those funds to relocate if necessary?
Well, that's, you know, historically, that's kind of always why we had some of those funds in case we do ever have to go out looking for a place and, and, you know, we always said, oh, it's for that rainy day. Well, March 13th last year was our very rainy day and, and we've had to use some of those funds this year. Um, so, um, it is, you know, it's, it is being used. I'm going to have to dig into it again to get us through till June for the, for the best of this fiscal year, um, most likely. Um, we, um, I'm hoping to get that second round of PPP alone to help us through. Um, but, uh, you know, I don't know how much we will be able to, I don't know how much it will cost to relocate. I really don't know. So I don't, I, it's hard to answer that question because it could be gone like that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Robin.
Hi, uh, hi, Robin. It's Kate.
Thank you.
Um, um, so I just want to clarify because Sean asked about, um, your expenses for this year. Um, and you said you were coming in, you know, under expected expenses, but then you just, you mentioned that.
I think I misunderstood. I would say with current.
Yeah, I think you know what I'm getting at.
Less than what we budgeted for, but, but, you know, as, in, in certain line items, yes, like our instructor line item is definitely less expenses. But all our instructors are, are, um, the program that they're teaching pays for them anyway, so that's kind of a wash. Um, so, you know, we still have those fixed expenses, like they, you know, phones and, and IT and, and health insurance doesn't go away, you know? Um, so those, those, you know, and liability insurance, that bill's coming up soon, our next installment, so things like that, you know, our, our recreation soft program software that we, people use to register online, that bill's coming up. So, so there's expenses that we could not cut, uh, but we, you know, we didn't produce the brochures that, that was like $13,000 we saved just on that. We didn't hire as many, um, lifeguards or counselors this summer, so that definitely saved on those expenses. So, you know, we definitely cut where we could and where we had to, um, you know, especially our administrative assistant.
Yeah, Sheila. Um, so another question, and, you know, it's so hard because this last year and into this year is such an anomaly, so it's hard to compare. So last year, I know we did, um, we did up the budget a little bit, and I know it's, it, it didn't meet the, the initial request. Um, so I guess, had this been a more normal year, um, you know, what would, like, what would happen to fill that gap between what was requested and what the town actually gave?
You mean like the extra 15 or 12 or whatever it was?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, then we would have gone into our reserves and taken it from there, which we've done the past few years. Um, when both towns, when both towns didn't meet our request, that's where we go if we don't, if we, if our program revenue is down, that's where we have to go because we rely almost 80% on program revenue. So when that's not met, that's when we have to go to that. And we've had to go to that the last few years, especially last year or this current year. And I expect that, I'm going to have to go into it again, um, definitely this spring.
I did, I did have one more question, Kate.
Yes, yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
Um, just, you, you touched on it, I meant to ask before, you, uh, do you feel you're, you're maxed out at what you can ask the public to pay for your programs at this time? Because you spoke about increases in, um, in, uh, in salaries and then that's, that's realistic. There's nothing you can do about it. It's all statutory. Um, so, uh, do you believe you're tapped out or can you go up on your program fees anymore?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question and, and we do raise, we do try to raise them a little bit every year. We did raise programs this year. I raised swim lessons, um, mostly because those, I had to have less, more staff with less kids based on the guidelines and regulations for the, um, COVID. So, um, you know, I did raise it and people are paying. Um, we did raise a little bit for camp and, and people pay. And yes, when, when do you get to that point where it's, you're asking people for too much? Um, we try to do just a couple of dollars a year, so it's not too noticeable. And, um, we plan to do that for the next couple of years until we get to that $15 max for the, um, minimum wage. Um, and we actually have a letter all ready to go that we, was supposed to be in our brochure, explaining that, um, to people and why we are raising our fees because this is what we're dealing with with the minimum wage. That kind of got put on the back burner this past year, uh, because we really just haven't really been able to do that too many in programs versus with childcare and, and things like that where we would raise it. Um, because that's really where we're going to feel it the most with camp and childcare and, um, aquatics. Um, so yeah, we, we do plan to raise it a few dollars and when, when is it going to be too high? Not quite sure yet, but as long as people keep signing up, we'll keep raising it.
Thank you.
All right, Robin, I just had a couple of things to, am I, am I characterizing it right? That basically the budget you request from both towns covers your core activities, and by that I mean full-time staff salary and benefits, uh, IT costs, I mean, it goes to that.
Yeah, um.
And then the, the revenue from the programs, even though it may not entirely, is intended to cover the program cost.
Yeah, and, um, I, I would say the amount that we ask from the towns does not cover the core.
Okay.
I would say it's definitely short. I would have to add it, really add it up and let you know, I could let you know what our core is. Um, I want to say, I think I did, did that last year for killing. I would say it's probably about 300,000 maybe for core. I'd have to add it up again to give a, I can't do that, but, um, uh, to give you a more accurate answer, but I would say what we ask for towns is, is not quite enough to cover the core.
Okay. All right, and the other question I had, you, you talked about not purchasing equipment and other things this year that you normally would. So as you, if we move into a more normal year, and let's hope this coming year will be, what would you anticipate as sort of your makeup costs, the things you have to buy that you didn't this year because you couldn't, so it's an additional burden, basically?
Yeah, mostly, uh, mostly supplies for camp. Um, we didn't really, we, we just kind of used what we had in, in the basement, what we had left over. You know, it was bare minimum for what we gave those kids, things like that. We, we, I don't anticipate any major equipment, things that we need. Um, you know, something that, something that is on the back of my mind is the high school last year told us that we were not allowed to use their volleyball equipment. And they were doing, they got this brand-new volleyball set for, for the school and, and I don't know if you guys are aware, but we do this co-ed volleyball league. It's very popular for adults that we've been doing for umpteen years and, uh, we use the high school court system because it's four courts, four, eight teams can play at a time and, and, and they're like, you know, that's like a $10,000, you know, system. And they're like, you guys are going to have to buy your own. And we're like, why? We can't buy our own, you know, and where are we going to put it? And, um, that kind of, obviously, we couldn't do a volleyball league this year, but we don't know if they're going to let us use it next year. And so that would be something that we'd have to really beg, we have to, you know, beg them to let us use it. And if we have to buy something, that's going to be a major cost. Um, thankfully, last year, we were able to purchase a copy machine, so we, we were able to do that. That was big. Computers, our computers, every few years, one has to be replaced. That's something I can see happening with at least one or two of them. So, because it's been a couple of years now.
Okay. Thank you, Robin. Sean, Kate, anything else for Robin?
I do have one last question. Um, does, did Killingworth fund the total request from last year?
They did, yes.
They did? Okay, that's okay.
The year before they. I haven't met with them yet, yeah.
Sorry, what, I, I, sorry, did you say you have met with them yet or have not?
Yet. Um, last year, I didn't meet with them last year till like April, so I think they're much later than you guys. So I'm, I'm assuming I'll hear from them in March maybe, or usually seems to be a little bit later than Haddam.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
All right, Sean?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. All right, at this point, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the 112,164-dollar budget request from, uh, HK REC Authority.
This is Sean. I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, 112,164, is it 84? I'm trying to read a small screen here. $84 as proposed.
All right, thank you, Sean. Any further discussion on the issue? Kate, you look like you're itching to say something.
I am, and I, I, this is, it's a tough, I, it's a very tough spot for HK REC to be in because the, the, I feel like a lot of the increase comes just from the minimum wage increase alone. Um, but at the same time, it, 12, an extra $12,000 is still But at the same time, it, twelve, an extra twelve thousand dollars is still an extra twelve thousand dollars. Um. So I don't, I. I'm just sharing my thoughts, not necessarily a question, just.
Uh, I'm just, Kate, I'm just looking historically, we, we flat funded. Below their request, when you look at two thousand seventeen, eighteen, they actually expended was more than they've requested this year in the past. And we've shorted them a little bit, um, but then they went down eighty. And they're on par to use up everything we've given this year and as Robin said, dip into their savings. We, and we do ask, um, people, organizations to use some of their own funds too. Um, I guess my question for Robin now would be if we funded at one twelve. Will you still, do you anticipate still having to go into some of your own cash to support your programs?
It's hard to know what next year is gonna be like. Um, if, if it's gonna take six months to get back to where we were. It's so hard to know what, what the future is gonna be like. I don't, you know, I feel like we depend on people to. Do our programs and so many people still don't feel comfortable. You know, in, in groups and classes and we've lost so many people since March. I haven't seen some of our. Regular participants in so long. Some people are starting to come back now. It's, I'm starting to see some people that we haven't seen in months sign up for some things. We're still offering some virtual programming and I'm starting to see them do that a little bit more. Um, but it's just hard to have, you know, in September, are we gonna get? Are, is our after-school programs gonna be back to where they were or is it gonna, right now we're down to just one staff, you know? So. If I had a crystal ball, I wish to, to, you know, if it still is low, um. Then we will have to go into reserves, though, just like we had to last year. Um. You know, and how long is it gonna take to grow back? I don't know. Um. I don't think it's gonna be instantaneous. I don't think people are gonna all of a sudden start doing things. You know, I think it's gonna take time to build back up again. Um, that's my feeling. I mean, I didn't think it was a year ago, if you would have said it's, you know, we're gonna be dealing with this for a year and a half. I thought a few months. So, um. I don't know. I don't know how long it's gonna take for people to start, our numbers to grow back to where they were.
Okay, um, we'd be more comfortable, we split the difference and, um. They're asking for a twelve thousand dollar plus increase and we do about half of that? Would that make it a little more comfortable?
This is Kate. I mean, I definitely, I, my heart supports the hundred and twelve, but, and I think Robin. You, you kind of made the light bulb go off in my head that it's just, it's so, it's so tough to. Try to plan for this when last year was such an anomaly and, you know, the minimum wage increase, we know that's coming. And so I just, and I'm trying to think more long-term, like, you know, looking beyond twenty twenty-two as well. You know, how, how much of an increase are we going to see year after year? And, you know, and it's, and I'm biased. I worked for HK Rec for ten years. So if I could give them five hundred thousand dollars, I would because I think the program is worth every penny. So I just, no, I don't want to change the, the proposed budget because it's, they deserve every penny. I just, I worry about looking beyond next year's budget and how. Everything's, I mean, we know it's all just gonna keep going up.
Thank you.
Oh, this is Bob. The other point to consider, and Robin, please keep this in mind regardless of what the budget turns out to be. Is if, because of changes and maybe vaccine is more widespread sooner than expected and programs pick up and expenses pick up. You can come back to the board and the Board of Finance to request additional funds. That's always an option.
Yeah. Yeah.
And just one last thing, this is Kate, you know, the other thing that makes me nervous and. If it makes me nervous, I can't even imagine how Robin and HK Rec feels about this, but just the uncertainty right now of. Where their office location will remain, you know, if they can stay in that building because I just, if. You know, if, if, if a rent payment is due or even relocation costs, that's going to be not an insignificant expense. And, you know, we will always help any way we can.
Yes, that, that is definitely a, a, a worry that we're dealing with right now. Um. We love where we are. It works perfectly for what we, what we have to do and how we operate. Um, and I can't imagine being anywhere else besides in that campus and that, that building. Um, it's just been so great and, um, yeah, having a, the, the, having to deal with a rent, I don't know if. If that's something that we have to have every another as monthly expense. I, I, I don't want to have to worry about, you know, we, we, recreation, we're, we're supposed to be providing people with like. You know, opportunities and programs and, and better way of life, you know, all this essential, um, services. And it shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't have to be worrying, oh my God, are we gonna bring, get enough people to pay for our rent? You know, that, because that's where it's gonna go to. It's gonna go on the programs, you know, the people. Doing, they have to do a program, now part of that's gonna have to go towards a rent. So that's what we don't want to happen because, um. You know, that's not how Rec should be.
Uh, you know, the, the relocation was why I pretty much, I said early on, so I, I fear that you're going to have to really dip into what savings you do have. For those costs.
Yeah.
So we're, we're gonna end up paying one way or the other.
Um.
If we have you dip in more now, then we'll end up probably having to help fund that later. Um, but Bob, again, I'm also, I'm willing to, uh, adjust my, um, my motion if you, if you, if you guys feel it. Um, more comfortable, um, approving a little less money and then, uh, Robin having, Robin for comfort appropriation if need be. Uh, if that makes you guys feel more comfortable, I'll, I'll bring it down to one oh six, basically, as I said, splitting the difference.
All right, we have an amended budget. Kate, any comments on the amendment?
No, I'm done with my ramblings of the heart.
All right, motion is on the floor to approve a budget for HK Recreation Authority of a hundred and six thousand dollars. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Robin, for your time.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin.
All right, next up, youth and family, Laurie, I see you're here.
I am. Hi, um, everyone can hear me. Um, so excuse me, I have animals making a lot of noise. Oh, if, I apologize for that if that comes up. Um, I wanted to start off in a little bit of a different way, um. Than the two folks that spoke before me. Um, because of the nature of our work and the, um. The mandates that we have from the state to provide. Certain services and grant funding that we've gotten in order to provide certain services. We had to make a number of adjustments, uh, this year. And working with the funders, working with the state, working with United Way, working with the community foundation. We were able to redirect grant funding either, um, specifically to sort of purchase, um, services or. In, in many cases, it was, um, gift certificates to local businesses to sort of help families that were struggling. But we were also able to take dollars from, uh, grants and, um. Kind of meet the goal in sort of a broader sense of the word. So using, so we created essentially a number of new things this year despite. Um, despite COVID and despite the lack of visibility, I guess, that we had in the community. So it, it's been an interest, it, I, I won't use the words that come to mind. It's been an interesting year, um, in that regard. But we were able, for example, to, um, we are now in the schools where we have not been in the schools. So two days a week, um, I, I have two clinical people, uh, providing mental health counseling in schools and running a series of groups during the day. Which is something that prior to COVID, we, we were not in the schools and that has been, that's been a, a real benefit to both the schools and also for us. Um, we managed to, our early childhood programs, we have a series of, a wellness series set up. Where it was gonna be education and awareness for families in the community, grandparents with young children and then also young families. To come, meet each other and then learn. Those had to be canceled, so we created a. Um, early childhood sort of activity bag, which we've been distributing to community members. But also we purchased, um, four libraries of books, social emotional learning and provided. A library to each of the two libraries and then also to the, to the two elementary schools. That talk about the curriculum that incoming kindergarteners will get when they become kindergartners. So we're trying our best to, uh, find connections between the work that we're doing and then the work that the schools are, are doing as well. Um, without having the benefit of being able to sit and sort of direct people or sort of speak, speak to these things sort of in person. Um, and we are. Um, we did, we are one of very few, um, youth service, we are required by, by mandate to sort of serve, um. Youth and families and the work that we do is based on data that we collect. Um, we were supposed to have administered a survey last year. We were not able to do that, but we are one of very few youth service bureaus that did do the survey. Um, it was actually miraculous. The schools reached out to us for the first time and, and said that they were interested. Um, in our doing this. So in a six-week period, which is unheard of. Um, we were able to get in the schools, get the survey done, and I've already gotten the data back. Um, and it's been, it's, it sort of lines up really nicely with the work that the district is doing on the vision of. Sort of what the district hopes to see when children graduate, when youths graduate, um, from the school district. The data that we collected, I think, will help inform the work of that particular committee. And, um, at first glance, anyway, it, it, it's looking to us, which is somewhat of a miracle in this time. That more kids are feeling connected to schools than they have before. Um, based on the data that we're getting back from the survey. So. And we will be taking that survey and working very closely with, um. With the schools, with people identified in the schools, with youth, and we're hoping with the larger community. So it'll be the first time that, um, youth services will, will sort of actively spearhead. Uh, information sharing about the snapshot of youth that was taken literally three weeks ago. Um, so it's every kid, seventh through twelfth grade. So there's been a bunch of things, oh, and we also, um. I need more water, but we also did, uh, we're trained in, um. QPR training, which is a suicide prevention curriculum, which is an evidence-based curriculum. Three, two of our staff right now have been trained and we have our second clinical person scheduled for March. Um, we are, have been in touch with the, uh, Nathaniel Field Foundation. Um, in touch with the schools and in touch with a couple of the, uh, faith-based communities. So people are interested in this kind of training and so we've been able to, um, lay the groundwork to facilitate this. Again, at a time when we're sort of invisible. Um, so that's just what we've been doing, um, as of late. Uh, the budget that we submitted, um. It reflects what we asked for and received last year, for which we were very grateful because it was a significant increase and that, um. We are very aware of that. Um, but to get to, I don't know who asked this question, it, the, what we get from both towns, it's not, does not cover. Um, payroll and, uh, insurance costs, like it, it does not cover that. Um, and I'm looking, I, I, I recently learned that of the hundred and one youth service bureaus, we are one of twelve that are a nonprofit. Um, the remaining youth service bureaus across the state are part of the municipalities or part of the school districts. So I'm trying to figure out, um, like how it works, how it works in other communities. To sort of figure out where we are in that range, um. To know, sort of to know how we need to direct our advocacy work or, you know, we're gonna get a consistent amount from the state. It's, it's about twenty-four thousand a year. It's not a lot, or twenty-eight including the JRB, but, um. It's, it's not a, a lot, not enough to cover the cost of what we do, um, despite the mandates that we have. So, um, truancy is the newest, um, and I'm working closely. We are working closely with the schools to, to begin to identify kids that are either school avoidant or truant. Um, and it's very difficult in these times because we have parents with the right to say, I want my child to be a remote learner. Um, but a remote learner can be a back, a black square now and no, um, no shared. No, no interaction. Um, and that child is technically. Uh, not truant, but not engaged, I should say not engaged. So, um, we are working with the superintendent. And then a group of people to try to identify ways of, um, helping to connect families back to the school. So thinking of youth services as sort of the connective tissue to get people. To recognize that we're all on one team, trying to support kids. So. Uh, that's kind of the sweeping picture. Um. We've also, I, I guess I'm, I'm plugging for us because we, I, I don't know if people saw the article. There was an article in the Hattam Bulletin that, um, Alan had asked me to work on, just in terms of the work that we've been doing since COVID. And I don't think it's just because of COVID, but there's been huge increases in the needs of families in the community. Um, and I did a quick, it's just sort of looked at it quickly before this meeting. Um, and just, just sort of for the holiday giving program. In twenty eighteen, we had thirteen families with thirty-nine kids. In twenty nineteen, there were twenty-two families with sixty-one kids. In this past year, it was thirty families with eighty-three kids and twenty-four of the thirty families were Hattam families. So we know that there, there are needs out there and little by little, I think people recognize that we are one of several places that they can come. Um, but we still have work to do to have people not be afraid to. Reach out to us. We, we don't want to be the people that they reach out to when everything has fallen apart. We, we want to try to engage with families sooner. And so the work that we're doing with Early Childhood Ed is to try to lay the groundwork so families know who we are. Uh, before their kids become middle schoolers and start doing dumb things. Um. So. There's that. Um, and then additional, I guess, the value add. We also, uh, provided the schools with, um. Um, support in terms of, uh, planning and programming speakers, the survey already mentioned. Um, and we purchased about forty-five hundred dollars in, um, vaping equipment for both the middle and the high school. It's been installed at the high school. Um, and what it does, it's a, it's a, it's triggered when there's. Uh, we all know it's not smoke, it's not, and it's not water vapor, but the plumes of whatever it is that go to the ceiling, it triggers a. An alarm in the office and then people know which bathroom to go to. Um, when school is back in session, which seems like we don't know when that will be. Vaping was a huge issue in school bathrooms. It is not as much of an issue now, but we fully anticipate that coming down the road. Um, so we were able to purchase this, these materials for the schools because they were not in the school budget. Um, should we have to? Uh, uh, you know, we're, more and more people are requesting counseling services, but our. Our counseling dollars, um, we are, we are down. We are down a lot. Um, we are just not collecting revenues, but we are still, when I looked at sort of what was collected in twenty eighteen. We're still sixty-four percent ahead of what was collected two years ago. But we were on the way to being much more successful, um, in terms of collecting. Income that could sort of offset the cost of having two clinical people. I, I believe that will eventually be the case, but I was sort of selling that last year as sort of what we're doing. And then as of March, um, you know, we went from in some months, bringing in more than four thousand dollars. To, to bringing in about seven or eight hundred dollars a month. So it's made a huge, it's, it's had a huge impact on our ability to. Um. Basically self-sustain in, in many respects. So, um. So if we have to cut, um, you know, what would go, it would be, uh, it would be supplies. It would be our, um, membership in organizations that give us the ability to sort of then apply for funding. And or know about funding coming and share that as we do with the schools. Um, we would probably have to pull people out of the schools for counseling because that, we aren't able to bill for that counseling time. Um, we would. I, I'm not sure about clubs. We might have to reduce the clubs that are offered, although right now that is, that's not something that's occurring all the time. Um, and our visibility in terms of sort of social, social norm campaigns or sort of the billboards and the. The, the things that you sometimes see, um, we would have to probably reduce, we would have to reduce that. And reduce our consultant line, which includes money that we pay the police or the resident state troopers when they work with us on projects. And, or purchase of, of, uh, materials as we did, and actually we shared with. Uh, other youth service bureaus because we weren't seeing the. uh, other youth service bureaus because we weren't seeing the volume. Um, but we purchased these quick tech to check for canop, for THC uh, in vapes and ways of checking for opioids. So we, we shared that wealth with other youth service bureaus because we just were not getting the referrals that we anticipated. Um, we've talked and uh, we talked about uh, reducing hours, which we did do before. I, I came back full five days uh, in the fall because it was, it's been a little crazy. We were down a staff person, but you know, we've talked about reducing the, the hours that were opened if, if it came to that, but um, that hasn't gotten that far. And then I know Sean raised the rent issue and Robin and I have been like, sort of, yeah, like sighing heavily from upstairs and downstairs, but the, you know, I've, I've reached out to a commercial real estate um, broker just to see what the square footage cost is. He said it's like between 10 and $18 a square foot. We already don't have enough space where we are. And, and we need private clinical space for our clinical people who meet with families who would not necessarily want to walk into a school building or couldn't walk into a school building at seven o'clock at night. So there's a lot of things um, on the, on the plate, a lot of things to think about. But we are hopeful that the counseling will continue to grow. Um, I am applying for, this is no guarantee, there's eight in the state that are going to be awarded, but I'm applying for a very large grant. Um, that's due March 12th. We should know by May. Uh, if we receive that, that would certainly help a lot for the coming year. Um, but if we don't get that and um, we, we know the United Way, there may not be the United Way funding because they've been collecting less from their donors. So there's just a lot of moving parts and pieces, but it doesn't change. There's a lot of moving parts and pieces and there's a number, and there are more families that are having more trouble these days. So there's, there's more of a need for us. Um, so, so the rental thing, which we were told not to panic, thank you Jen, not to panic, but um, it could not have come at a worse time. Let's just, let's just put it that way. So, oh, and Robin, I'm just going to say this, Robin and I even talked about maybe, you know, once we know what the cost of, maybe it would be less expensive certainly than two organizations having to pay for rent to go elsewhere for us to put our heads together and come up with a, you know, let's, let's create a joint capital campaign to fix the roof or the, get a new burner, like that might be a way better option for us. So we're hoping, we're meeting with the superintendent on the 18th and we're hoping to start those conversations. So, um, so I know I've just talked a really long time, but that's my, that's my spiel. So questions?
Thank you, Lori. This is Kate. I do have a question. Um, so your proposed budget for the, the next year, uh, overall, like, does that allow you, does that give you the resources to accomplish what you're setting out to accomplish? Um, and I just want to say too, I really appreciate the um, the justification and the narrative that um, went along with your budget.
Yeah, I mean, I think um, the budget that we submitted, it, we're taking a pretty sizable hit in sort of conferences and sort of the the lovely things that sort of people energize, but my, but yes, I think we would be able to accomplish what, what we framed with this budget. Um, working toward, again, we hired, well, I didn't get to that, but we hired a second clinical person in June who we, I had to let go in August because she didn't, she wasn't, she didn't have her debris. She was misrepresented a little bit. Um, she was supposed to have her debris, but it didn't happen. Um, so we had to, we had to hire somebody else. So we've had a year where I thought I was going to have that person and she only started in December. Um, but with two clinical people working, um, assuming COVID, assuming we can do these things, certainly we know in the warmer weather we can, we will, we should be able to bring in more revenue, although my estimations are a bit, um, they were optimistic, but I, I do believe that we can build back this department because we are hearing from people that they want us. Um, and they need us. Uh, and this, and the schools are recognizing that too, so that's good. So yes, it would be a little less, um, the fun stuff, a little less fun stuff unless we get the grant, another grant. Um, but there are ways of where, there are ways of doing things that yes, we could, we could do what we set out to do with this budget. Oh, and PPP, we also, Robin, we talked about that too, but we applied for, got PPP. We are in process of applying for PPT, PPP two, which certainly would help as well. So.
Thank you. That was my only question and just thank you and all of Youth and Family Services for all the services you provide to our communities. You're definitely a very integral part of, of a close-knit community like this. So thank you and everyone, the board, um, for all the work that you do. This was an insane year and just reading this narrative, you were really able to pivot and, and tackle it head on. So thank you.
This is Sean. Um, yeah, Lori, thank you for that narrative. I, I want to echo what Kate says. One of the uh, more detailed, um, and it makes our job easier than justifying um, funds. But I'm going to ask the same questions I've been asking for the most part. You have, you have a fund balance, I imagine, savings and has, do you still have to go into that despite having, you know, we increased your budget last year. There were specific reasons we did that last year uh, by $14,000. Will, will you still have to go into your own savings um, to uh, to support the programs that you have?
Well, I mean, with the, I'm going to, I may have Carrie like, jump in here, but I, with the, with the PPP, I think we are close to being okay. Um, close to being okay to where we were last year because of the PPP funding.
So that PPP funding is not a guarantee. Um, unfortunately, we don't know what's going to happen. So without that.
So I can interject, um, the PPP funding that was received in May of 2020 is the source of our reserves that we're predicting is going to be necessary to be used. Um, so that's why we feel comfortable, you know, saying that those are known funds that are available to us. Um, it is true that we're not certain about PPP funding for um, for this spring of 21 and whether or not that would be available to us to supplement. Um, but it does provide relief um, for keeping our reserve funding the same from years past, so that if there is a decline in the grants that are awarded, we would still have additional funds um, in our reserve to help navigate through next year.
Okay. And I just want to say, I'm, I was glad to hear about the, the QPR training. Um, I've been through that training myself. It's an excellent and very simple resource that if more people would uh, would, would be, would follow it, I mean, we'd probably save a few people. It's, it's such an easy thing to do.
Yeah, I think one of the most, like, the thing that struck me most with that training is they said, if people treated QPR training the way we treat CPR training, you, there would be a lot of sadness prevented in communities because it would not be scary to say, to say out loud, like, are you okay?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's, so I'm glad to hear you guys are doing that. Thank you. Did we lose Bob?
Bob, yeah, he hasn't been there for a while.
Well, the microphone's off. I don't know if he's, there he is.
He's green.
I just shut off all the cameras because my, my internet connection is fading off and on here. Uh, I have no questions beyond what's already been asked. I, I will call at this point for a motion to approve the $98,000 budget request.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve um, item 405, uh, Youth and Family Services in the amount of 98, 98,000 or 98,8?
98,8. Yes, please.
Um, in the amount of 98,8 as requested.
All right, motion has been made for approving 98,800. Any further discussion?
Just um, one thing on the, I, I see where Kate saw that on the department total does not match. So looking at the uh, Youth and Family Service, request on mine, it says 98 even.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what I've got in my summary document. I don't know if that was a typo on our part.
Hmm.
This is, what is your request? Is it 98,8 or 98,000?
It was, it was 98,8. It was what we got last year.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, it's correct in the standalone document.
Okay, I'm just looking at the, at the active, the, the active one that we're working on. The, the, it's just a, all right, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve the request of 98,800, line 405. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Much gratitude.
Okay, next one on the list is the Brainerd Memorial Library. Tom, I assume you are still here?
I am still here. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. And um, I appreciate the time to just go over a bit of uh, what we have in store for FY22. Our request is flat with what we received last year, 368,010. And that's about 80% of our overall 442 operation. Um, the library has been closed because of construction delays, as you know, but we've not been um, napping. We've been uh, very busy with um, curbside pickup, remote programming, outreach, um, technical assistance, still providing copies, fax and prints onsite. Just can't let people in until we get our CO. Um, we are closing tomorrow to move the utility pole, which we hope will take a barrier away from our operation not being uh, open to the public. Once that's done, we can begin the paving and get the fire exits done and the supply disruptions are what they are, uh, given the year we've had. But we're optimistic certainly in the next few months that I will be returning to at least limited public service. And um, if things progress linearly by the beginning of um, FY22, in July, we should be uh, back in business with our new and improved facility. So all of our budget suppositions are based on, on that um, hopeful forecast. We've obviously had a pivot between uh, our heavy in-person and um, community-based operation. Um, we've been replacing them. As we mentioned, we still maintain, you know, book clubs and movie screenings, uh, teen advisory boards, instructional videos, um, provide community service opportunities for students with various um, outreach, clerical assistance, uh, maintenance of the Little Free libraries, uh, participation in instruction videos and so forth. Uh, we coordinated with the farmer's market this year, uh, because we have a culinary club and a book, cookbook club, so we managed to uh, at least be a little part of that. Things like uh, virtual paste nights and uh, original programming and concerts for children. Uh, bribery card drive at the high school, summer reading club, uh, programs on nature, literature, genealogy, uh, Christmas events like gingerbread house contest, which is crazy popular. Um, but also more scholarly things like cook, uh, talk from a professor at the new school and a lecturer at the Met who uh, talking about Aesop and archaeology and folklore. We added a um, wifi hotspot because a lot of our offerings are digital and default of coming into the library and there is a small digital divide in Haddon. So we've added additional hotspot to um, redress that. People can get to their digital resources. Uh, obviously the digital resources, um, usage has been up. We have sort of a new look staff with the um, increase we received last year. We applied all of that to redressing some of the salary deficiencies as we saw them. Being well below all the Connecticut Library Association recommended salaries. All staff with the, are, um, that have a category, the CLA recommended, now meet the minimums. Um, and that also buffers up us against some of the uh, compression of the rising minimum wage uh, for some time. The only folks who will be subject to the minimum wage increases are the substitutes. They comprise about two and a half percent of our overall payroll. So that's not a tremendous exposure there and that won't be an issue until FY23. Pardon me. Um, the fundraising efforts continue. We're important that we do our part there. And um, we're having a surprisingly positive year in that regard. We still have more work to do, but we are only in February. So we're hopeful on that. We are about 70% of our payroll, of our budget is payroll because um, we are a service organization and the irony is even though we're closed, it's taking more people to run a staff and to perform a transaction than it did when folks could come in. So we have a continued need for full staffing. Each transaction takes more time. There's a lot more patron interaction between the phone and the email and an increase in readers advisory because patrons can't come in and browse and select and retrieve the materials on their own. So all of those jobs that were done essentially by the patron who then turned up at the desk with the book and said, give me this. We have to do all that for them. We have to bag the books, coordinate a pickup time, bring it in when they forget to get it, reschedule it and so forth, and help them select things that they can't actually see except virtually. Uh, not everybody's comfortable in that interface, so there is a lot of personal contact there. And that's been actually a good thing. There's not a lot of good things that happened in this last year, but having the level of connection with the um, patrons uh, beyond uh, the interaction or the transaction at the desk has actually strengthened some of our ties. Uh, we've been cognizant of some of the same forces and pressures that are, the predecessors in this meeting have identified uh, with the residents in Haddon. Uh, we've upped our outreach to supplement what used to be an important component of the library experience, the in-person transactions or the in-person connections. So we've sent cards, greeting cards to live, to patrons that our staff, knowing them through either prior to shutdown and subsequent to shutdown, have identified as potentially isolated. Um, to let them know the library is thinking of them, that we're a resource for information and just general connections through the programming and others, other facets, uh, initiatives. And we've started some limited home delivery uh, as it's needed and within our capacities for folks who have uh, mobility limitations or otherwise housebound due to um, infirmity or temporary uh, injury. So um, that's been, uh, again, taking a little more staff time that may have been uh, not in the past, something we did. Uh, and obviously um, as most people are now behind a screen, more than they used to, we've been doing more remote tech help. Uh, so folks can avail themselves of the resources that we have, but also other um, skills that they need, which maybe wasn't a, a question for them in the past. You know, they would do things in person. Now they have to do it online and the library does help folks um, learn those basic skills. During the closure, we've waived all uh, fines. Fines are always at will here, certainly the last seven or eight years. Uh, it was a small part of our budget, but given the um, pressures on the community and the time constraints and the general disruption to people's lives, uh, we've ceded that uh, during the fact that we're closed to the public. We do have uh, three book drops, but um, we've just been cognizant that it's difficult for folks. It's a 1,200, $1,400 hit there. Um, we'll be getting virtual visits uh, next month, which is uh, FaceTime or Zoom via iPad by appointment with the librarian to walk around and browse the collection in real time. It's especially important for the young readers who um, want to see the books. And I want to see that picture of the dinosaur. No, I don't like that one. I like the cool one. You know, that we lose by putting a number of books in a bag and hoping that some of them are a hit and some aren't. So that'll be again in a few weeks and um, once that pilot at the children's level uh, is refined, we'll extend that to the adult level because as we know, most people just know a book by the one with the green cover and the guy on the front. So, so we're trying to replicate as much as we can with the doors closed, but we also are planning to be open again uh, with the programming. Our circulation needless to say is down. We were closed for a bit, uh, at staying at home. But also um, we do have limits of how many books people can take just so that we can fit them in bags so that we can physically go and get the items. What used to be a one-minute transaction can now take 10 minutes or so and we need to be smart about the use of our uh, staff and resources. And we need to be smart about the use of our, uh, staff and resources so we could perform the other core functions of the, uh, operation. The other component was that part of the children's collection was inaccessible during the renovation while they were doing the work. We kind of sort of take down part of that collection, which took away some of the, uh, access. Uh, but the collection purchasing that was delayed from March to through July during the stay-at-home, uh, was reconstituted. The good part about that is the books will be here even if they came a little bit later than they would have. In terms of reductions, financially, we did save a bit. There was some opportunity on, um, office supplies. We weren't here to expend them. We're, uh, utilities because we can have lights and computers running for a bit. Programming, uh, down somewhat, although we're recouping that and professional development. Um, we're a little under, uh, on fundraising and as I mentioned, the fines and fees. But ultimately, um, we see that, uh, well, it's one last little statistic. I know Board of Selectment is BOSS, Board of Stories, right? And Board of Finance, BOF, is Board of Facts and Figures. But each needs both. So I'm going to just deviate from the, uh, the supposed script there. My insights for the first three quarters of FY twenty-one, which is up until we shut down, were that, um, just in that three quarters of the year, we were already almost equal in teen attendance program to the entire previous year. We were about eighty-five percent of children's program attendance. And as you know, that had been up three hundred percent over the last few years. We were twenty-five percent up in electronic circulation, even though we only had three quarters of a year versus FY nineteen. And our circulation exceeded by, um, two thousand, which is to say about four percent, uh, the previous years. And again, this is all within three quarters. So when I say I'm hopeful for a resurgence in FY twenty-two, um, I'm basing it on some of the figures and the precedence. There is, I believe, a strong pent-up demand for library services. I certainly hear about it. And, you know, we worked very hard throughout the years to get people to come in and it's difficult for us to shut them out. So, um, you know, it's certainly something that, that's how we know how to operate. This is the temporary version. We will retain some of the uh, modes of operation like additional outreach and, and possible, uh, parallel virtual programming as we go forward. There's some small expenses associated with that, but, um, ultimately, we plan to return to the model that worked for us and, um, having the funding, having the, uh, support of the town as we appreciate for the eighty percent of our overall operation will allow us to do that, uh, more reliably. So that's the sales pitch, but I'm happy to answer questions, um, or just expand on anything and cover something maybe that I didn't remember to talk about.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Kate, Sean, any questions?
I do. This is Kate. Thank you, Tom, um, for that review, uh, and just a comment. So my day job is actually in commercial construction, um, and the libraries and cultural community centers really seem to be making a comeback. I'm definitely, nationally, I'm definitely seeing a trend of renovations to these buildings because they, they really are serving as a, as a community, as a hub. It's, you know, it's, it's so much more than just checking books out of the library at this point. Uh, so my question for you is looking beyond twenty-one, twenty-two, like in the next three to five years, do you anticipate like any major funding increases from the town? Like what sort, you know, you have that huge renovation project going on right now. Are there any other large capital expenditures that you expect in the next few years?
So in terms of capital expenditures, when this first phase is complete, we did receive, uh, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar state grant, um, which was made official this, uh, this year uh, for an additional phase to, um, renovate the interior and, um, study spaces, uh, restore the history room a little bit. Redo the children's area, the teen area, the community room, so that we will be able to accommodate, um, more efficiently. The demand that maybe we have now, but we can't fully meet with the facility in its current iteration. Uh, the last time this place was renovated was ninety-six. Um, we didn't need to make room for computers and, um, people didn't work on their laptops. And there were a lot of changes to the way libraries work. Uh, we do anticipate having better access with the parking lot and the lower level, um, all abilities access, uh, entrance and the new restrooms and more appealing space that, um, will continue, we're hoping to see. People use the space. So the capital expenditures looking out, um, will be, um, we've had some conversations, uh, if we can get, um, the six seventy-five from the state and then we have about a total of a million outstanding after we're done with this phase of more renovations. Um, of which we're hoping the town would probably put up, I think we said three eighty. And the library would do a capital campaign and also draw down from its endowment for the remainder. We've already put about four hundred and eighty thousand out of our endowment, uh, into the present phase, which, um, grew significantly from the original plan. But I think, um, we're looking at it as a twenty-five or thirty-year, um, fix. It's, it was worth the investment, you know, from the endowment. So we took some of the market saving, uh, market gains, uh, took them out of that liquidity, out of that risk and made it, uh, into the building. So invested it in the building instead of the market, so to speak. So, um, that obviously sits outside of the operating budget, but that's kind of what our vision is for the next three, four years.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Tom. This is Sean. Uh, thank you for, uh, for sticking with us tonight. It's, uh, um, and, you know, going back to my Board of Finance days and now you, you, you touched on it right there. We, I, we've always asked, are you going into the endowment? Because it, the library does have a fairly decent endowment. And we asked it over here, you know, are you willing to spend down some of that endowment to save some money from the town? And it sounds like you answered that question before I got there. Um, thank you for that. And, you know, yours is the largest part of the, uh, um, of the, uh, uh, cultural recreation portion of the budget, uh, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And thank you for coming in flat. Um, does that cover your operating expense or will you have to, actual operating expenses? Do you have to go into endowment also for that too?
So every year, um, we get somewhere between eighty and eighty-three percent from the town. Um, if we look at a ten-year trend, I think we were at eighty-six percent and we're at about eighty percent now. Uh, we take, um, from the earnings that the endowment generates to supplement the part of the budget that's not covered by the town. We also do fundraising, uh, for part of that money and then, um, a small amount in, uh, operating grants, primarily programming and technology. So each year we do go into the earnings of the endowment. But we typically don't touch the principal unless it's for a capital improvement. Because that's reinvesting directly back in the facility in a permanent way.
I, I know we've discussed this in the past and I just don't remember the percentage off the top of my head. Um, compared to other towns, similar towns, um, percentage-wise, and we've discussed is how close is Haddam to what other towns are supplying or giving, um, to their libraries?
Right. So association libraries, which are grantees of, of a town, typically receive about eighty-four percent. Folded into some of those numbers are services in kind that don't show up in the physical, in the, in the financials. So if, let's say, a town also provides payroll services or landscaping or physical plant or things of that nature, IT support, those don't show in the dollars. So the eighty-four percent versus our eighty percent is, um, it tells most of the story, but there are also some other savings that, um, you know, we pay whatever, a thousand, uh, fifteen hundred dollars a year in payroll costs or something like that. And some towns folded in or insurance and so forth. So, but we're very grateful for what we have. We're about eighty percent. Most are about eighty-four in association libraries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have nothing specific. At this point, I'll call for a motion to, uh, approve the requested three hundred and sixty-eight thousand ten dollars.
This is Sean. Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the three hundred and sixty-eight thousand ten dollar, uh, budget request.
Thank you, Sean. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All in favor of uh, Brainerd Library's request for three hundred and sixty-eight thousand ten dollars. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approved unanimously. Thank you very much, Tom, for your time. Are you in your office right now?
I am.
So I, I love that early American laugh part off to your left. I think it's a wonderful decorating touch you've got there.
Um, where is it?
What's behind your file cabinet? It looks like you've got a wall half-open.
Yes. Oh, yes. You're right. Yes. It's, uh, it's where I keep all my garbage. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Much, very, very kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Before we move on to Public Works, the five-one-five culture and recreation line. We've separately approved tonight is the HK Rec Authority budget. Village Park remains flat. Do we have any questions or comments on that? I'm just looking eventually for a, a full approval of the five-one-five line.
Nope, no questions.
I have no questions on Village, uh, Village Park.
Okay, next one, Brandon, we've just talked about, obviously. Next item on there is Haddam River Days. Kate, I had a question. Is that something that'd be folded into the EDC budget? Or should that remain a standalone?
It should remain a standalone. Um, Robin Munster has about fifteen different reasons why it should stay separate. I can, um, I can shoot you an email.
Okay. Good. Thank you. I would appreciate that. Send it to, uh, Joanne so we can get it out to Sean as well.
Yes.
All right. We have any discussion or question on that budget? I mean, obviously nothing was spent this year because we didn't do River Days because of the pandemic.
No, I have no question.
Okay. Moving on, next item in here, uh, Veterans Affairs, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars was what they requested, which is the same as what was budgeted this year. Their expenses this year are almost nothing. Obviously, some of their major expenses, the Memorial Day Parade and a couple others had to be canceled or drastically altered because of the pandemic. Do we have questions or concerns on that?
I guess my only question is who, um, they're doing renovations on the memorial. Are, who's paying for those? Is that coming out of their budget? And do they have enough if it is?
I know the Mason is donating his time for that. I don't know what the tier, I imagine the material cost is coming out of their budget.
All right. I just, my, I think, I, I think we, I wanted to talk to them, make sure they had enough money in their budget. We cover what their, what their needs are, but they didn't spend much last year. And if we give them the same this year, they should hopefully be all right.
Okay. Uh, and finally, and I think we did talk about this at the last meeting, Higginham Cemetery Association, three thousand. That's been flat as far back as our, our figures on these sheets indicate. They haven't requested more. I'm comfortable with what they're asking for. Uh, any other comments?
Nope.
No.
All right. With that, I'd like to get a motion to approve the entire five-one-five culture and recreation line. Joanne, I'm going to ask you what the total is in that line because I'm working off a paper copy. So that extra eight hundred dollars from the, um, Recreation Authority were not, are not reflected in the figures I'm seeing. So what, do you have that?
She's totaling it right now in the, the budget.
Okay.
Okay. I have four nine seven eight eight five. Yeah, yeah.
No, sure.
Looks good. Okay. All right. Can I have a motion then to approve total for line five-one-five culture and recreation, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars?
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve, um, five-one-five culture and recreation in the amount of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
All right. Motion's on the table. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries. All right. Last one and certainly not least, Chris Corso, you're up for Public Works.
Hey, everybody.
Hi, Chris. Thanks for coming up.
Hi, Chris. Yeah.
Well, thanks for hanging out this long. Hey, Chris, just before we get going, you guys are doing a phenomenal job, um, keeping up with all this, uh, crazy weather.
Thanks, Sean. Appreciate that.
Yeah, and, uh, so, all right.
Are you ready?
Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, we, I, I, we try to be as flat as possible here at Public Works. Overall, I think, um, of course, I don't do these, the salary portion of our budget. Overall, I do believe where we should be around twenty-five thousand dollars down, lower, lower, um, in, uh, generals, generally speaking, um, there were some increases, uh, where I would expect them, uh, in the uh, transfer station in the building, uh, building maintenance lines, um. Those are just a matter of course and, and increases in rates and, uh, the transfer station, uh, never seems to, to to slow down, uh, as far as use. Uh, it only increases. Um, and as most of you know, we don't, uh, we don't charge anything other than the, the pass itself, which is, uh, quite a bargain. Uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna realize a loss at the transfer station every single year and until we, uh, consider a different, uh, uh, charging system, uh, to sort of even that out. So other than those, uh, things that I just mentioned, um, this budget has remained, uh, a fairly, a flat. Or as close as we could get. We, uh, unfortunately, Public Works is the biggest, uh, biggest money spender in the town for obvious reasons. Um, so we try to keep a pretty tight rein on it. But we don't have control over rates and fees. And, uh, so we do, uh, realize some increases in some areas. So, uh, some of those areas are fuel, uh, heating fuel, fuel for the vehicles. We've had some in the, in the building, uh, line items. We've had, so added some, some security and some monitoring in some of the buildings, uh, electric, of course, rate increases. Uh, there's no predicting what those are going to be. And the maintenance of town buildings in general, um, you know, a lot of, looking at a four-year average, you know, it's, it's fairly close. Um, of course, we've added HES, um, which has its own separate, uh, line item. But, uh, again, an added expense. Other than that, I tried not to, to, to increase any of these items and, and again, I did decrease. Other than that, I tried not to, to, to increase any of these items, and, and again, I did decrease some line items. Mostly in the transfer station. For the increases, so.
Chris, I have one question. You just mentioned HES. On the budget I'm looking at, it's the live one that's online. I'm seeing zero in the request for HES operating costs. Has that been moved somewhere else, or?
That, uh, that's because I wasn't, you know, uh, I would have to sit down with Bill and, and, and figure out, and Bob, and figure out where we're at. Um, so I, I believe I left it blank with the intention of, of speaking with those two. But the way it's turned out for the last few weeks, I haven't had much time to do anything but coordinate snow removal. So, um, that, that's an oversight that it never got filled in, so, um, that number, I, I really don't have a, I, I, I can tell you that I, I believe, um, what was it, 65? That was, was budgeted last year for that.
70 budget last year, you spent 27.5-ish right now as of so far.
Yeah, I think the expenses, uh, are far under, uh, well, I say far under, um, what was budgeted. Um, with that in mind, again, I don't know exactly what, what's going on there, and that's more of a bill thing. So, um, but I do believe that we were, we had, uh, we had not expended some of those funds, so I think that was, uh, you know, something that we could look at to, to save a little money. Again, the things, there's really not, uh, Bill does have some folks using that building now, so the, the, the heat is turned up, uh, in and out, so the, the, they're using quite a bit of oil over there. Not a very efficient, uh, heating system over there. So, you know, most of the expenses is just keeping that building warm. You know, Public Works has been plowing the parking lots, um, after the storms. And that's kind of increased because they're, they're using the building more, which is good. That's what we want. So, yeah, I don't, uh, Sean, I don't have a solid number for that. I, I feel that it's, it's gonna be less than what we budgeted for this year. I just, you know, again, I'd like to talk to Bill and Bob and get a better handle on that before we plug a number into it.
I, I, yeah, just, um, just, just so we can get, you know, move this on a little bit towards, uh, completion. That'd be good. But I was gonna ask if you can reduce that from last year, because it really, the expenditures doesn't seem to be the same, but we are using it more, so I don't think we can reduce it to, you know, not too much, but there, I think there could be a reduction there.
Yeah, I agree.
What's the, uh, the H2O, the H2O rental slash alarm? What is, what's that?
That, um, we have some alarms, and one of them's over at the, uh, uh, the Veterans Museum, uh, for, for cold and, uh, unless, uh, that building doesn't freeze up. It has in the past. That's why those were put in. Uh, they added panic buttons in most of the town buildings and offices. That was an added expense, and the monitoring of all those things is what's costing us more money there.
It's a small increase, but just one of one big increase. Okay.
Yeah, that's what, that's what that represents.
Recycling went up, um, that's just because recycling's a mess right now.
Yes. The whole industry's a mess.
Yes.
Again, again, I think as a town, uh, we're gonna have to take a hard look, um, at our transfer station, and, uh, again, the first and foremost, the fee schedule, a fee schedule. In addition to a pass, um, recycling itself is, is, is gonna turn, uh, I'm afraid, to a point where most folks aren't recyclers, and I hate to say that. I've become a big recycler myself, because we all should be, we need to be. Um, but it comes with costs. It comes with a lot of costs that people, that, they have to understand. It's a, it's a great thing. But it costs money to collect these things. It costs money to ship these things, and it costs money to process these things. It, it's, it's not really making us any money.
You know, I don't know if this is a discussion for this budget, it really probably isn't, but if you saw the article about the pay-per-bag in the, for current today, and it's, and that's a, a hot, a hot topic, so that is a discussion we have to have down the road of how we change it. We're not losing so much money in the transfer station, but we have to be careful in how we do that, um, because it's a sensitive subject. And people don't wanna pay for that.
Yes.
I'll jump in here. Hi, Chris. Um, I have a question about, um, nope, I lost it in my scroll. I think it was like the road materials repair and maintenance, um, got a pretty hefty cut.
Yeah.
But it looks like it's fluctuated a little bit over the years, so you're comfortable with that, with that budget for next year, and you'll be able to make any repairs that need to get done?
I am. I am comfortable with that. Um, like, even that one, a little bit of thought. It's, it's a, it's a large line item, and, uh, most of what we do is, is, is preparation for paving. So our drainage work and our, 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 you know, everything that we do to get ready for paving, what's underneath the road, is kind of laid out for us a little bit by what roads we're gonna do, because Pete and I have a pretty good idea of what needs to be done and what the costs are gonna be. So there're gonna be some years where it's gonna go back and forth a little bit. But I think, in my mind, if we can save $25,000, $30,000 one year, but not the next year, it's, it's, we really need to do that. In the end, if you look at the four-year averages, it's gonna even, even itself out. But I think, uh, we need to save it when we can, I guess, is my answer.
And is it safe to assume that, um, the more roadwork we do, like, as far as reworking and repaving, you know, the further ahead we get on that, this line could keep reducing in the future? Does that make sense what I'm asking? Because I, like, you know how we, with the bond and everything, and we have our set list of roads, so as we chip away at, at these roads that really need some major repairs? Or does it end up evening out in the super-long term, or is it always a game of catch-up and maintaining roads as others get fixed?
Yeah, no, that's, that's not unreasonable to think that, yeah, once we get our, we're, we're gonna finish our bond money at some point. That's, that's gonna end, um, of course. Um, but at that point, yeah, we should have some decent, uh, overall rated roads, which would mean less work. Uh, a similar item would be trucks. Our, our fleet is a little bit newer, so I've been trying to whittle away at that, um, maintenance line item for, for the vehicles. So, yeah, absolutely, I think it should, um, you know, once we, we, we get to that point.
Thank you. And a question on everyone's other favorite topic, trees. Um, I saw the, the item is, you kept it flat, um, but it does look like you've done a decent amount of work this year. You've, um, you've, the, we've spent almost that entire line item. Do you think we could benefit from having more in that item, or is that, like, or is that the amount of work we can get done just because of resources and availability?
We may have been able to increase that a little bit, um, but I think that $120,000 point is just about what we can spend in that timeframe. You know what I mean? Yeah. Um, you know, we, we've been hitting it pretty hard, and I would hope that in the next couple of years, that, that should also start going, you know, backwards a little bit. I'm sure everybody's driven by Public Works and seen the, the stack of sticks we have over at the Rossi property there, and those were, those are trees that we've taken down in the last six months, so. And there's another big pile down at the, uh, fairgrounds as well, so. Um, yeah, I would hope we can, would start, uh, whittling that down.
Thank you. That was all my questions. I think this was a really thoughtful budget, and, again, during this crazy year, it's hard to, you don't really have a baseline to compare to. Um, but thank you for keeping it as low as you possibly could.
You're welcome. Um, one thing I forgot to mention is we, we've had a, a little, little bit of change in, in personnel in regards to the transfer station, which should, should save us a little bit of money. We took that, uh, split position, uh, here at Public Works, and then the transfer station, and just made, uh, three part-time positions at the transfer station. So, you know, we'll, we'll see in the end how it works out, so, you know, part-time, three part-timers instead of the, the, uh, split position at Public Works. Seems to be working out pretty well. We have, you know, a little bit of turnover, a little bit of training up there, but things are working out okay.
All right, I suggest, this is Bob, I suggest for a process for, uh, moving forward, that's, Chris has, I think it's five different line items. Why don't we go back and take a look at and approve and ask any final questions on individual line items? First one is line item 300. It actually says Public Works. It's sort of their general expenses. Chris, I had a question on here. There's an item that doesn't look like it was a new item, but it looks like it's funded for the first time in a while. Seasonal labor, 8,400. Could you address that for us, please?
We did away with that. Well, I, I think, yeah, we did do away with that last year. That's to hire, uh, you know, a, uh, high school kid for the summer, or somebody for the summer to do some, some tasks. We really, I don't think we have, uh, had one since I've been here, but that's what that line item is there for. We thought it was a good idea at the time. Perhaps it's, you know, that's something that could be. It was more of a community thing, I think, than a, than a necessity.
All right, so that wasn't intended to hire any contractor or anything else, like, for plowing or any of the other seasonal jobs?
No, 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 it was not.
All right, Kate, Sean, do you have feelings on that line? Actually, sub-line.
This is Sean. I'm, I, I guess, um, do anticipate actually needing to hire someone, um?
I, I don't know. Um, past selectman was big on, on bringing somebody in for sort of an odd job, kind of, kind of a deal, things that just kept getting pushed aside. Not major things, minor things, um, maybe pet peeve kind of things, but, uh, yeah, no, I, I mean, I don't, I, I'm good if we lose it.
I know some towns do summer, um, high school summer employment programs, um, but it's, but it's an actual program they run, and it's not, uh, individual department.
Sure.
Item, so I, I would have no problem getting rid of that here, and if we wanna have that discussion down the road with YFS, whether or not they want to, uh, institute some type of, um, you know, summer employment program, you know, through the town. We could look at that down the road, but I, I don't think we should be really doing it department by department.
I agree.
Yeah, and I, I, this is Bob. I certainly don't think we'd be properly prepared to run it this coming summer. And given the pandemic impact, who knows if there'd even be demand for it? So, I would propose, Chris, since I didn't hear you object, just dropping this 8,400 back to the zero it's been.
No objection.
All right, any other discussion on line 300, Public Works? All right, Joe, I'd like to get a motion to approve line 300, and Joe, can you give us the revised total?
Okay.
All right, can I have a motion to approve $1,143,523 for line 300, Public Works?
This is Sean. I'll make a motion that we, um, approve line 300 in the amended amount to, uh, $1,143,523.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on. Public Buildings, I propose we hold this until, Chris, hopefully, we can get together with Bill tomorrow or Thursday morning and have this. We're having another special meeting on the budget Thursday night to get a figure in there for HES. Do you think that's workable for you?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, one change I would like to see in this area, just because I just paid the bill, uh, fire hydrants. It's actually about a $3,000 a month charge from Connecticut Water, so I just propose we should amend that amount 3,300 to, 33,000 rather to 36,000?
Yeah, thank you, Bob. That was a question I also had. Uh, obviously, that water system is new. Um, and I did not have the information to put into the budget on exactly how much that was gonna be. Thank you.
See, Joanne has made that change. Thank you, and we'll come back to do the HES operating costs, so we'll hold line 310 Public Buildings until hopefully Thursday. All right, next one is 325, our seasonal favorite right now, snow and ice removal. That budget actually, request shows a decrease over the current budget.
Uh, this is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, line 325 Snow and Ice Removal in the requested amount of 306,000.
All right, motion has been made. Any discussion on the motion?
All right, can you guys hear me? My, my internet just went, uh, wonky, so.
Yes, we can hear you. Just can't see you.
Okay, I had to shut everything down except for the audio.
All right, Sean.
I couldn't hear you, so I don't know where we are.
Okay, we are at item line 325 Snow and Ice Removal. Kate has made a motion to approve the requested $306,000 budget.
Okay.
Okay, not hearing any further questions. All in favor of the 306,000 requested for line 325 Snow and Ice Removal, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, again, motion carries unanimously. Next one, engineering costs actually reflecting a $5,000 decrease. Chris, why are you projecting a decrease there?
I think the averages, the four-year average, we were, uh, we were lower than, uh, last year.
Okay, and looking back, 50,000 would meet each of the 18, 19, 19, 20, and it certainly looks like it'll meet what we're, what we're doing to, to this year.
I do have a question, though. Will the, um, the community septic in the sidewalk projects be an increased cost? Like, do they, would they get charged to this line?
Yes, I think the preliminary stuff we've been doing has been charged to this line right along.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
It depends. A lot of those are supported by grant money, but depending on the grant, whether you can, you have to have design services first, or you can include it or get reimbursed later, so.
Yep, okay.
All right, I have a motion to approve the 50,000 requested in line 327 Engineering.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion.
I will make a motion. We approve.
All right, motion is on the table.
I must have a good lag, I'm sorry.
It's okay, Sean. We'll just pause before, to give you time to speak. Uh, any questions on the motion?
No.
All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously for Engineering Services, $50,000. Next one, we've talked about this some already, Waste Disposal. Uh, line 335, a total request of $354,629. Line three thirty-five, a total request of three hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve line three thirty-five waste disposal in the requested three hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
All right, motion has been made. A discussion on the motion.
I have a real quick question for Chris. The M S W disposal fee. You, you said before that we end up in the red on that usually. How much do you think will be in the red and do? Have any come from appropriation?
You know, I gave Bob a figure. The transfer station is a loser. And I mean that monetarily, not, it's not, it's not a bad thing. It's, it's just gonna always lose us money.
Not too good.
I don't have a number on that. To, to, to give you.
All right. You can add money, but I guess we could deal with appropriation at, at the time when, when needed.
Yeah, that's true. And if we find out more before the Board of Finances approves it, we can always. At that point, at the, with the Board of Finance, discuss alterations to the line.
Yeah, because of the volatility. I'm sorry, volatility of that, of the trash in general. You know, you, you were shooting at a moving target all the time. You know, we're, we're losing the, the burn plant. So I, you know, I can't. None of these things are really very predictable.
And waste disposal is a big topic with the legislature, with costs and. Karma or, or not karma, C C M. Bringing forward because it's just. It's a concern. Let me leave it at that.
This is Kate, just a general comment. I know a few years ago, we had a, like a committee or a task force related to the transfer station and other, you know, like alternative. Resources. And they seemed like a pretty successful committee and I know they're not around anymore. I'm not sure if it might be worth looking into revitalizing that task force. Especially because if this is a hot topic right now, it would be beneficial to have a dedicated group of people, maybe kind of supervise or not supervising, but you know, keeping. Track of what's going on because it's, you know, Chris and Public Works, you guys are just so busy already and same thing with Town Hall. So, you know, if, if we could get a couple volunteers who can just. Stay on top of the changes and, you know, look into any grants that might be available. I, I can imagine there would be a few people who would feel very passionately about this subject. So I would. Not mind seeing that task force come back.
All right.
Kate, Bob and I did sign up with a, a lot of other municipalities have similar concerns. And we are part of, Bob, help me out here. I can't remember what the, the, the name of it is.
Those crazy acronyms.
Yeah, it's a long, you know, it's. Four or five letters, but I, and that's exactly what they're doing, Kate. So, you know, and we're, whereas we're not heavily involved in it yet, we do monitor and then we, I, I do, you know, look into what they're doing. But I think regionally, they're, they're, they're considering exactly those things.
As Kate said, we did have that task force. And I know when it was disbanded under a previous administration. The, the members of the task force were kind of disappointed that it disbanded because they were working on some good ideas.
Yeah, I think they could coordinate with that group that were, were, that. Consortium, for lack of the proper term right now, I can't remember the name, but they, they, they may. Enjoy working with that. So, yeah, absolutely.
S S M.
That's close.
Yeah, and Kristen, actually, I've been using her as a point of contact and the emails that come in concerning meetings and. Whatnot for this group, I have just funneled right to her and she's staying on top of it. But Kate, I think that's probably a worthwhile discussion to. Start with Kristen about revitalizing the Sustainability Committee and maybe folding all this into that and adding to it if need be.
Yes, I think. That would definitely work.
All right, at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the requested. Amount in line three thirty-five waste disposal, three hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
I think we're on the discussion part.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, I think, yeah.
Right, sorry. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, we have covered all the line items. We've gotten input from all of the invitees for tonight. Are there any final comments, Sean or Kate?
Thank, I thank everybody for, well, giving us the information we asked and. Things have gone well. Thank you very much for your input.
Yes, and thanks, everybody, for hanging on, too. My dog is snoring. I don't know if you can hear. She gave up a long time ago. She had a rough day of sleeping all day, so it's, it's rough.
All right, everybody, this time, I'd like, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.